Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Moving along. Do we have approval of the minutes from the Regular School Committee that met October 4th, 2018? You have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Next. Okay, do we have a second?
My second.
Okay. Any objections? Nope. Okay. So we're gonna go out of order down into new business. Consideration and action to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Chelsea School Committee and the Chelsea Administrators Association effective July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019. The agreement between Chelsea School Committee and Chelsea Administrators Association was ratified by the Union on October 29th, 2018. Roll call?
Committee and the Chelsea Administrators Association effective July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019. Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Maronsky?
Yes.
Mr. DePato?
Yes.
Mr. Ambrosino?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative and one absent.
Nine in the affirmative, one absent, motion passes.
Auto motion to move into public comment next.
Second.
Any objections? No. Okay, so now we will proceed to our public comment section. Anybody who wishes to address the school committee is welcome to go to the podium. There is a sign-in sheet where we're asking you to write down your name and address. And also, once you go up to the podium, can you state your name? And just a reminder to everybody, you have four minutes to speak. And we are here to listen to your comments and concerns, but we will not be engaging in any question-and-answer session. We're just here to listen. Thank you. If you could come here to address the school committee?
Thank you. Can you hear me? Is it on?
Can you go a little bit closer? Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Superintendent Dr. Bork, Chairperson Velez, and school committee members, thank you for affording us the opportunity to address you this evening. The Zonta Club of Chelsea is a professional women's organization dedicated to the advancement and advocacy of women and children. Our club welcomes members and provides services to the surrounding communities of Revere, Everett, Winthrop, and Saugus. Our members are committed to change the status of women in the way they are perceived and the way they perceive themselves. We do more than advocate for women, we do real work. We volunteer countless hours assisting those who provide safe harbor for battered women and their children. We provide food baskets and food certificates for needy families during the holidays, and we organize numerous fundraising events during the year. Over the past 38 years, events have generated close to $400,000 in donations. The proceeds from these fundraisers support an assortment of causes. Zonta is an international organization. However, two-thirds of the funds we raise remain local, the majority of which benefits the city of Chelsea. Scholarships are awarded annually to young women from the local high schools. In fact, since 1980, the Zonta Club of Chelsea has awarded over $55,000 to young women graduating from Chelsea High, which is double what the other communities receive. We have also provided nearly $13,000 in food certificates for the Chelsea Schools Department to distribute at the discretion of the Department for the Needy Families. Like many service organizations, the Zonta Club of Chelsea has experienced a decrease in membership. Many of our members have retired and relocated. Some have worked many years, believed it is time for others to stand up and do their fair share. We are here tonight asking for your help. We are asking the school committee to declare a call of action to the entire Chelsea School community, the administrators, the teachers, the paraprofessionals, the unions, and the representatives of all those that work in the city to make the city worthy of its children. In all the years we have been providing services and scholarships in Chelsea, we have never had nor we have asked for assistance from the Chelsea community, the schools community. We should have. If you don't let your needs be known, how can you expect people to recognize them? We do not ask for your help on behalf of Chelsea Zonta. We ask on behalf of the children of the city of Chelsea. Without a strong and vibrant membership, we can't possibly sustain the level of charitable services we provide or the amount of scholarship dollars we award annually in Chelsea. Without more help, it may become impossible for us to continue supporting our causes in Chelsea at the current levels. We have given you an informational packet with the Zonta International Welcome Brochure, a snapshot of the history of Chelsea Zonta, which includes a list of service donation recipients, a membership application, and contract information for the Chelsea Club. Share it with a friend, a family member, a coworker. Contact a local Zantian through the contact information. I guarantee, the more you learn about Zonta and what we do, the more you will want to join us. Don't hesitate on doing something you've been thinking about doing, just do it now. If we can't put our children first, who can we put first? True heroes are those who go the extra mile for someone else. They put their heart and soul in helping others. Zonta is looking for a few strong individuals, women who can stand up for herself and her beliefs. Please make our presence and our contributions to the community known. We need active, engaged members willing to commit time and effort to our mission. Without the assistance from Chelsea, it may no longer be possible for our limited membership to continue supporting our efforts in this community. If every person here, if every person here that joins, you grow our possibility of fundraising 10 times over with fundraisers, with ticket sales, with support. We have fun doing this, we love doing this, our hearts are in it. We just look for your help in strengthening the club so we can generate more money and give larger scholarships and award more scholarships and do greater things for the city of Chelsea. So I would like to, at this time, recognize other members of the Chelsea Club of Zonta that are here with me tonight. This is Bonnie Fishman, Georgia Green, Mary Jane O'Neil, and Barbara Lala. These are just a few of the women that work tirelessly and endlessly to make all these donations possible. So, thank you, and we look forward for your support. And if anybody has any questions or comments, I'd be happy to take it at this time.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bork.
Madam Chair, I just want to publicly say thank you to the Zonta Club for the years of dedicated service to our Chelsea Schools and to our students. It's the scholarships, but just yesterday Bonnie dropped off yet again this year the gift certificates for our students, for our homeless students, for, you know, a meal or, you know, whether it be Thanksgiving or the December break. And every year, our social workers identify our neediest students for the holidays and send those gift certificates home to them. So, again, our deep, deep gratitude. The scholarships have helped so many, so many young women. And I apologize publicly for the placard. It's about two years old, and unfortunately, it was an intern. I'm not blaming the intern, I should have proofed it. But it will be corrected next week, we have new ones on order.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Dr. Bork, I appreciate it. Thank you very much for your time, ladies and gentlemen.
Can we have a thank you letter for you?
It's a thank you letter for your generosity again this year.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
So we actually had the Zonta Club for presentations. So we are gonna go to the public comment section. Again, you have four minutes to speak. And we need, please state your name and address, please? Yes.
My name is Roberto Rodriguez. I'm resident of Broadway Glen. 855 Broadway. Entonces, yo nunca había escuchado esto. Para hacerles realistas. De hecho, tuve que pedirle los papeles a la amiga aquí para poder ver de qué trata esto. Estamos hablando de 3.3 millones. So, ¿dónde están las prioridades de nosotros?
Desculpe, como usted estaba, no lo escuché bien, ¿puede empezar otra vez?
Sí, perdón.
Okay.
So, mi nombre es Roberto Rodriguez, yo soy residente de 855 Broadway Glen, el edificio más alto de Chelsea hasta hace poco. Ese edificio tiene más de 120 familias adentro.
Roberto, sí. Traducir?
Ah, okay, sorry, sí.
Okay.
Sí, yo... Yo soy residente de 855 Broadway.
I'm a resident of 855 Broadway Glen.
Sí. And he... Hacha, me confundí. Yo lo voy a tratar en inglés, so spare with me. So, yo, I'm a tenant of Broadway Glen, 855 Broadway, Chelsea. So, this is the first time I see something like this, a first time. I've never seen the 3.3 millions invested in veteran field. This is heartbreaking. This is heartbreaking, because I see more than 100 families struggling to buy my straps. To buy my straps. And we are investing 3.3 millions in a field? So this is, for me, is like, it's troubling, because it keeps going up. Housing keeps going up, everything keeps going up, and no help. We depend from ladies like this that take care of the people. The government is not stepping up. So, and, you know, the best example I can give to you today is Puerto Rico, okay? When Maria came in Puerto Rico, nonprofit organization, there's none. None. More than 5,000, 10,000 people, let's say it like this, have died and continue to die, because we depend from the government, period. If we had these ladies back in Puerto Rico, maybe we didn't have that many deaths. Maybe. So listen, my point is, right now I know that in my building, this is unknown, okay? And I know stuff in my building. I know whatever happens in that building. And there are a lot of kids there. Kids, a lot. So, that's basically what I wanted to say, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Roberto. Next.
Hi, my name's Emily Velozan, and I'm the parent of Robert and Olivia Levine. And we live on Addison Street, and they go to The Hooks and an out-of-school placement. I'm here today because I believe that children in Chelsea deserve to have the best opportunity possible when it comes to education. We know that children do well. We know that children do well when they do eat breakfast. Better education outcomes, get in trouble less, go to the nurse less, can focus on their education more. That is why I'm here to support Breakfast After the Bell, to give every child in Chelsea the opportunity to succeed with having a healthy breakfast. Thank you, and I hope that you guys support Breakfast After the Bell. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Justina Flores, and I live 273 Washington Avenue in Chelsea, and I'm a rising senior in Chelsea High School. And so today I come to speak about graduation on the field. I think it's very important, because obviously, we don't have enough room to be having it in the gymnasium. And obviously, we need some more, like, space in the field. Obviously, there's enough space for all the families to come. And I'm here also to support the seniors on creating this to actually happen, like, something that didn't seem like a reality, we're hoping to come to reality. And so, obviously, there's a lot of families in Chelsea, a lot of people who, obviously, when it comes to graduation, we want to be there, we want to be with our families, celebrate a special time, because we finish, obviously, our 12 years of schooling. And so, if we get the chance to have it in the field, obviously, everybody's gonna be able to be together, have an opportunity, have a fun time, and not, obviously, feel the sorrow when it is in the gymnasium.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, school committee members. I was here with a group of parents with their children, and they had to leave before the session started, so we went to speak on behalf of the children in the city of Chelsea.
Did you give your name and address?
Sure. I'm Frodofo, and I'm a citizen here in Boston, okay? And I am an activist, but most important, my role as a parent. I am the father of three, and I want them the best education they can, so that they can achieve their dreams.
I'm sorry to keep, but we need your actual addresses for our meeting.
571 Truman Highway, okay, in Boston.
Thank you very much. You may continue.
So can I proceed now?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I'm here to speak before you do to the issue that impacts Chelsea, as well as the entire Commonwealth. The role the city takes on this issue will help decide the fate of an important program that would feed thousands of children across the Commonwealth, not just in Chelsea. This program is called Breakfast After the Bell, or ATB for short. It is a piece of legislation currently sitting on the Housing, Ways &amp; Means Committee. It is sitting in this committee because a single group called Massachusetts Superintendent Association has raised some issues. Your superintendent sits on their executive committee as well. To be clear, we have reached out to every single school committee that has a member on the executive committee of Mass. By far, Chelsea has the greatest potential for benefit and has had the most vocal pushback citing its increase in rodents in the city. This program is personal. As a working father, I know how essential it is for my children to be ready to learn. And while I'm proud that I can provide for my family, there are thousands of children's and families who cannot. Simply by allowing this program to move forward, with allowing children to have breakfast after the bell, children who eat at this time are more prepared to learn, ultimately perform better academically, and studies have showed that. The legislation, who gives schools flexibility to implement the program and is fully funded by the federal government, in addition to the EAS Foundation, supports every school district with funding to help with initial startup program. In other words, this free program brings millions of dollars to school districts and helps improve academic outcomes. This committee and your school system will ultimately decide the fate of breakfast opportunities for thousands of children in Massachusetts. We, as parents, strongly urge you to support this legislation that has been worked on for two years and allow it to move forward. Together, we make sure my family, the families of Chelsea, and the families in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts have an incredible start of their school day. Thank you.
Thank you. Make sure you state your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Marcella Castillo. I live on 110 Chestnut Street in Chelsea. I'm the chair of the Chelsea Youth Commission. Most importantly, I am a senior at Chelsea High. We want our graduation to be outside on our field where we can be proud about graduating at Chelsea High, where our loved ones can watch us walk the stage. The field will get damaged with football players, soccer players, and track stars working hard on it every single day. When I'm walking that stage with my class, I won't be thinking about the damage done to the field, but to be proud that our loved ones can see us and not from the auditorium. You have seen my classmates, and like, a whole side is filled up by all of them. And we've gone to every meeting, because we really want this to happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Giselle DeGuffa, and I live on 600 Shire Left Street. I'm a former Student Council Treasurer, and I'm currently the Treasurer for National Honor Society. And I just have a short message from our president, Jocelyn Post, who wasn't able to be here today. She simply wants to state that outside graduation can be possible through your help, and I totally agree with her. I believe that things get done through collaboration and sacrifices being made, and this is ultimately what we're asking of you guys. And this is ultimately... So, we have a great student body, and I'm able to work with them each day. And day in and day out, we do things. And our parents do not get to witness that. And graduation is the last moment in which they're able to do that. And I want that to happen in the best environment possible. And I want this to, and I really hope that this request does not get pushed off for other years to come. And I really hope that you guys take us serious and take us for consideration. And I believe that if other neighboring cities are able to do this, that we can too.
Thank you.
Hi, guys, good evening. My name's Osmond Hera, I'm from Chelsea. I live in 52 Hawthorne Street. I graduated Chelsea High in 2016. Fortunately, it was in a small gym, but we made it happen. The reason I'm here today is, most importantly, is because sister's graduating next year. I graduated from Chelsea High, I was the first one for my family to graduate. My parents went to the graduation, one was in the smaller one, one was in the big one. It was kind of impossible for them to see me. But right there and then is where a moment where we all should look at. Our parents come from a different country with us, or somewhere born here. Some of them didn't get, not get the opportunity to graduate over there. And for them to see their kid graduate and not being able to, that right there should hit a point in your heart, be like, we should make something happen about this. We got a brand-new field, $3.3 million for it. You guys are concerned about heels, you know, damaging it, but we have 300-pounder football guys playing on it every single day. I mean, something should be able to get done to make this happen. I don't think this small, little obstacle can make, you know, a lot of people upset. You know, there's so many ideas that we can use and utilize to create an environment in which we don't damage the field and the students get what they want. I just feel like we can put all our minds together, figure this out, and get it done. I've been a floor expert for the past six years. I'm certified, OSHA, and Union. I can bring a lot of ideas to this, but if somebody just says no to every single idea, then we're not moving forward. And we have to move forward. We are a community which is so much diversity, and so many different cultures, so many different ideas that we have moved along since 20 years ago. So I think that knowing that we have this brand-new field, we should be able to use it. You know, some of these kids are first-time kids that are graduating out of their whole family. And for the parents not to get, see them, that's kind of upsetting. We can spend, you know, so much more into them than what we're spending now. You know, it's something that we can definitely put into our budget, we can make it happen. If we can fix every road in Chelsea, we can make this happen for the kids. We have enough money to fix a field that's 20-years-old that was perfectly fine for the next five years, we can definitely make this happen. I don't think why we need to use every obstacle that you can out of your book to not make this happen. You know, we are making kids out of Chelsea High, being involved in something so important that they're here on a Thursday night to try to get this done. So that right there should hit you guys and be like, this is important to them. It's important to my parents, it's important to me that my sister's graduating. And for me not to be to see her, because we don't fit in the gym, just because we're being, you know, picky about certain things, it's a brand-new field. I think we should be okay, let's just set out rules, set out, you know, headlines about it, make sure everything gets done the right way, we can protect the field, and we still get what we want. You know? And we can learn from other schools. Everett does it, Revere does it, so many other schools does this. So we're not the only ones that are gonna be doing this. It's not out of the blue, we're, you know, it's not a new idea, it's something that's been done before. All we gotta do is implement their ideas into ours, spend some time, think about this straight, get it done, you know? That's all I wanna say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Hello, thank you. My name's Ed Shoemaker, I'm from Boston, Massachusetts, 472 Warren Street, apartment 1. So I wanted to thank the Chelsea School Committee for inviting us and allowing us to speak. I'm here for a very important issue, one that I think is highlighted in just these amazing students here that were speaking today, that I'm pretty sure had their breakfast, and I'm pretty sure if I had to guess, it would be Wheaties. Probably not a funny joke, but... So, I come here as a father, just to urge you, the school committee, to support Breakfast After the Bell legislation. I'm gonna be very brief. You guys heard earlier about all the data and statistics, and why it's proven that, you know, children who eat do better. And I think, you know, almost $2 million of funding would come to Chelsea Public Schools to feed hungry kids. I know that you guys do a lot currently through free lunches, free breakfast programs, but this would be additional resources to ensure that even more kids are being fed and receive that nourishment before they go throughout their school day. And, you know, just wanted to reiterate that Chelsea kids, you know, they need food to concentrate, they deserve the opportunity and to learn with a full belly. And I think also, you know, one of the excuses that I heard being used, well, not excuses, but reasons, is sort of the public health crisis that's happening, sort of, in Chelsea Public Schools that I didn't really know about, with, I guess, a lot of parents just going through, even in short time, talking to parents, they're well aware about, you know, rodents and pests and different issues in the classrooms. And when you have the superintendent, you know, sort of writing in an email, that that's sort of the reason why they don't want to support or, you know, recommend the full support of this bill. I mean, that's not the Chelsea that I know. I know this is a great city. I'm not from the city, but I've been in the city a bunch of times, I know a lot of friends, I grew up in the city. And, you know, there's a lot of great people in the city that are working to make it even better. And I just, I just know that that's not, that can't be the reason why we're not moving forward with this. And I'm also ready to, you know, do myself and the organization that I'm with, to sort of help in any type of way, to help organize around, you know, getting the schools clean. But I think, right now, the most important thing is supporting this bill as is. And we need to get it passed now. So, I urge you to urge your superintendent to support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Claudia Castillo, 110 Chestnut Street in Chelsea. Today, I want to speak about the graduation. I have a six-years-old boy, and I think he has some attention problems. So, the happen is, we're working with the teacher in kindergarten, and she explained to me, the city don't have the professional help, like, too fast to, they can't help him. him with his attention problem. He's a smart boy, but he has some problem, so we need a professional help. We have appointment for December 18, so he's gonna be evaluated with a professional person. But it's sad today, like, yesterday, I don't bring him because I have to bring him to the clinic. He has some ear infection. What we really sad today in the afternoon, when I go to pick it up him, and I asked the teacher, "How are you?", she say, "Oh, that's, that's be a good. Why he don't come into school?", that's happened today in the morning. And she say, I say, "Because he was sick." And she say, "You know what? It's sad to say that, but I'm glad he don't have coming today." And I say, "Yeah, I know, I know happen, I know the emergency, something happened, emergency, the kindergarten had to lock up." And she say, "Yeah, I was happy because I don't think he can handle one hour, stay quiet and don't, you know, what is the emergency happened yesterday." And the other thing she say, "I think the kid's working in her costume or something like that." And she say, "And I was happy because he don't do any distraction to the classroom today." So I understand her points because she's a teacher, and she has 24 kids in the classroom. But it's sad to me. It's sad to me because I know he's a smart boy, he's a lovely boy, but I know he needs some help. And the only thing I want to say is, you guys can work together to see if we can have more special people working with our kids when the kid has these kind of problems. Because I have two daughters, and they try to helping to me, and I try to do the best I can, my husband too, but we know are professional. That's only I want to compartir with you guys this experience.
So tomorrow morning, you could call Dr. Burke's office, and you guys could come in and talk.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Marcella. Usted escribe el nombre. Usted escribe el nombre. Escribe su nombre.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna write my name first. Hi, everybody. Damali Vidal, City Councilor-at-Large and City Council President. Thank you, everybody, for being here. I came here last minute, so my, I literally just prepared my comments.
Sorry, Mr. De... You didn't give us your address.
What?
You didn't give us your address.
140 Highland Street in Chelsea, Massachusetts. So I've been a peer mentor here in Chelsea since I was a teenager, and that was a long time ago. But as an adult... So I've always worked with, like, younger generations, and as an adult, I worked as a youth worker with 17 to 24 street gang and court-involved young people. Over the years, I've lost many young people to street violence, jail, and I've also seen many resources for that age group dwindle as the years went on. There's less and less programming for our future leaders, and so that's why, to this day, I've stayed committed and continue to advocate for this demographic. There's so many challenges in our community that our young people are facing. So when the huge accomplishment arises of graduating from high school, despite the odds and influences that personally sidetracked me from graduating myself, I just want us to make sure that we're putting all hands on deck to make these graduations a success. I urge us all to find opportunities and figure out how we can make this graduation happen outside. For the past three years, as an elected official, I've sat on this stage as a city councillor while people, young people, cross the stage, getting their diplomas, and feeling a little guilty, knowing that there were some parents in another room having to watch it from a TV, in a whole other room. I know there are budget concerns, and we want to preserve our new field, I get it. It's like when my aunt used to buy her couches and leave the plastic on it so it wouldn't get dirty on a hot summer day. Then you try to get up, and your skin is peeling to the thing, it's ridiculous. Nonetheless, I just, I just don't understand what the point of investing in products and services if no one can utilize them, particularly the young people who we invested in the field for in the first place. If high heels mess up the new field, hey, let's talk about this. Make sure everybody wears flats. I just think that there's a way of us fixing this, and I know that, I know most of you up here pretty well, and I know, and I respect all of you on the committee. I know your commitment to our young people, so I'm here as a city councillor, resident youth advocate, but most importantly, as a mom, to urge the school committee, school administration, and all these young people that are here advocating for this graduation to happen outside. So please, let's try to figure out how we can make sure that these parents who have sacrificed so much for these kids to get to this point and not have to miss it. I also wasn't going to say anything because I don't know enough about this Breakfast After the Bell thing, but I do recognize that it is in the legislature, and I feel that we're politicizing food for our young people and on both sides. And I just really hope that we can come to an agreement. It's not just as simple as coming to a meeting and saying, "Hey, Chelsea, you're slacking, you're not feeding your kids, you're not..." And almost people from outside of the city telling us that we're not feeding our kids when we all sacrificed so much to make sure that our kids have everything they need. So this isn't a jab at you all because I have tremendous respect for you all, that you come here and I appreciate you advocating for our young people, but everything's not black and white, and maybe this bill is not, can't be a uniform approach for all the schools across the... Or maybe I'm wrong, I don't know, but I just want to make sure that we just continue to have these conversations, have the dialogue, and have respect for one another, particularly the Chair of the School Committee Board, because she continues to be an idol of mine in this community.
Thank you.
So let's figure out how to talk more and stop fighting, and let's figure out how we can make this happen for our young people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Devoe.
Good evening. My name is Amad Rivera, 15, Crescent Hill, Springfield, Massachusetts. I've come all the way out from Western Massachusetts because education is incredibly important. I have the privilege of being the Policy Director for Massachusetts Parents United, a letter that you all have received today. We represent 10,000 parents across the state, including here in Chelsea and in Boston, who are part of the Boston Public Schools. Education is not just important to me because I do this for a living. As many of you know, this is what you do right now for us is part-time and something you give of your life. I give this because my mother was a single mom. She raised me in Springfield, Massachusetts, one of the worst-performing school systems in the state, and has, actually has the largest Latino segregation in the United States. And she raised me her best, and one thing she taught me early was how to read, and she was so good to me. But there were times we were homeless, and the only meals that I got were at school. I remember government cheese and government peanut butter. I also remember when I couldn't afford and forgot my free ticket to get my meal, they would only give me a peanut butter sandwich and milk, but the truth is, those were the only meals that we had. So one of the reasons that I actually did the work and I'm passionate about the work working for Massachusetts Parents United is because we are leading the effort on something called Breakfast After the Bell. And just to be clear, this is not just about Chelsea. In fact, this is about millions of students across Massachusetts who need to have access to breakfast. The issue is that an organization called MAS, which is the Massachusetts Association of Superintendents, originally said they would stay out. This bill, over two years, made it all the way to the finish line. We are now literally weeks before this being passed. This particular executive committee has now said that they have some concerns and some pushback. We've worked on that. We've actually called every single school committee, and we've talked to every single superintendent in every school system that's on the executive committee. Your superintendent has the luxury and the privilege of doing that and has done some great work on that. Chelsea has articulated the most pushback and has by far the most to gain and benefit from this particular policy. I wish that Springfield could decide this. I wish Worcester could decide this. I wish Boston could decide this. But ultimately, the way this has worked out is that your superintendent and the Massachusetts Association of Superintendents are now the people who are deciding this. This is unanimously passed the State Senate, it's now in the House. For those who don't know, an informal session means that you have to have 100% agreement, meaning if it does not pass by the end of December, we will have to actually start all the way from scratch after two years of work. We are not saying that people don't participate. MAS, Springfield ironically participates at 89%, Chelsea participates at 31%. It doesn't mean that you don't care about your children, it doesn't mean that they're not being, that people don't want to give them food. It means that there are ways in which we can improve to make sure people have access to something as simple as food, and it's free. You are standing to benefit $2 million, and the ELS Foundation will actually give you the implementation cost. So the truth is, we are not telling people what to do. What we do is want to work in collaboration to educate children like me, like my nephews, like my friends in Worcester, my friends in Boston, my friends on the Cape, and the parents that we represent all across the state. And the only way we can do that is ensuring that the elected officials, the people closest to the ground, who understand the issues that completely permeate what's going on, is that they say, "We want to make sure that any benefit that we can give Chelsea Public School students, we are. Any money that they deserve, they should get." You all are a resilient community, fighting for what you deserve and believe in, and $2 million goes a long way in Chelsea. And I know that because I live in one of the toughest communities in the state, in some ways, even toughest in Chelsea, and we could use a lot, and we actually change our academic outcomes just by simply adding breakfast. So I'm asking you that we want to make sure this bill feeds millions of children, and Chelsea and this school committee has the ability to make sure that happens. And if we pass that now, you will be responsible for ensuring that poor kids and working-class kids get the food that they deserve. So if you have any questions, we're more than happy to have them. And just to be clear, we asked for a public hearing on the legislation, and we were not able to get that. We asked for private meetings with the superintendent and others to actually have that conversation, we weren't given that. This is the last recourse, and actually, our parents left because we had to recruit them so quickly that they didn't get enough daycare to stay here. So the truth is that we will work with anyone because food is more important than politics, and I'm here to make sure that happens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Yvette Rodriguez. I live on 146 Wellness Street, Apartment 1 in Chelsea, Massachusetts. I'm here on behalf of our students at Chelsea High School. All of our students have put so much work for themselves and for their parents. Our parents have sacrificed so much for us, and I think the smallest thing that we could do for them is at least let them see us walk on our graduation day. Everyone has a different story and background, and some of us have one sibling while others have six. Every student has people that push and motivate them through their academic careers, and it is upsetting that there is a possibility that they won't be able to see us walk on the most important day of our lives. I ask to please take into consideration because it is something that we really want. I know not a lot of our seniors were able to make it here today, but on behalf of our class of 2019, please let us have our graduation out on the field with our families.
Thank you.
I'm Norman Cologne. I live right here in... I'm Norman Cologne, I live right here in Chelsea on 199 Chestnut down the street.
Talk into the microphone. Yeah, move it closer. Thank you.
All right, so, do I start over?
Yeah.
All right, so I'm Norman Cologne, I'm from Chelsea. I grew up right down the street, 199 Chestnut, and I'm just here to speak for outdoor graduation. So I didn't really plan on coming up here, so it's gonna be pretty short, but my mom raised four kids, my older brother, me, my younger, my two younger siblings, and I'll be the first out of all my siblings to graduate and possibly one of the only two to graduate. So I would hate it for... I would hate it for my mom to go through all the struggle of raising all four children and then not to be able to see, like, the one of the first, or the first to graduate, like, person, like, in person. If she has to see it in an auditorium from a screen, that's just very disappointing. I would hate that. And I know you guys are, like, trying your best to make this happen and, you know, putting all efforts forward, but I feel like, as my gentleman said earlier, there's plenty of ideas we can implement into this to make this happen. All the issues that are popping up, it seems like they're really, like, not, I wouldn't say small issues, but there are issues that could be fixed with different ideas that we could all just pitch in together and figure this out, like. I just don't see why there's as much of a setback, like, as much of a barrier as there's been, like, at least as I've seen projected. But basically, it's like, I don't know, it'd just be very disappointing for all the parents who have struggled to put their kids, you know, forward so that they can graduate and have opportunities that they didn't have, for them not to be able to see their kids, like, in person, if they have to see it behind a screen, it's just somewhat inhumane to me, like, but yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. If anybody else is gonna speak, if you could just line up, because if not, I'm gonna assume that we are done with the public comment section.
My name's Tiu Nuyen, and I live on 99 Cook Avenue, and I'm here for outside graduation. I don't really care about the cost at all, I just want to look, go outside because it'll look nice and all, and have a sunny day because it was some new beginning. And I cannot imagine myself being in a red gym. It's real lame, like, just look like it's a small space and like, has like, time fading a bunch of ball in there. It's real lame, and I would just like, love to invite you guys to look in there, in red gym, and go outside and compare yourself, like, how would it feel to stand up there? And also, if we care about the cost, there's a bunch of balls stuck on the ceiling in a red gym, it would fall anytime at all, and like, we want like, the lawsuit on graduation day, like, it would fall on anyone, like, at any time. You know, you guys know it's true, it's true. And if we have outside graduation, we would invite you guys to come to see us, and I might give you the best speech of your life as the future valedictorian of 2019.
So if we're all set with the comments, we're gonna close out this section of the meeting. So the public comment section is closed. Yes, Mr. Hernandez?
I'd like to take a motion to go back in order, please.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So moving along, now we're gonna go back in order to presentations. Dr. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to call our Nurse Manager, Marie Washington, forward. The School Health Services Year in Review 2017 to 2018 report.
All right, I hope we got this right here. Hello, good evening. I'm the School Health Manager, Marie Washington. Just gonna give you a little overview of our last year, some of the statistics, and what our views are on education and health. So every year, let me see. Every year, we try to mirror the goals that the superintendent shares at the beginning of the year, to reflect this in conjunction with our team goals and our health goals. So we're practicing in the district, not just in medicine and education, we try to merge them together. By doing this, we try to contribute to a healthy and safe supportive school environment. The framework for the 21st Century Nursing Program has been our framework for the last couple of years. We look at the whole child, the whole community, and the whole school as one to try to meet the needs of all of our students. So this year, in my message to the health team, we reflected on the accelerated improvement, the goals of the district, and our framework for nursing. This speaks to us as we call how Florence Nightingale blazed the way for nurses and subsequent leaders before us. Our team consists of, this year, 10 full-time nurses, three substitute nurses, an athletic trainer, three health aides, a vision-hearing technician, along with our school physician, Dr. Rebecca Lambert, from the MGH Health Center in Chelsea. I'm happy to say that our nurses are continuing their education, and currently, four of them are in a master's prepared program to increase their education and nursing goals. Our mission statement reflects these goals as professional nurses working in a school community. So we do a lot of things to share with the community. We have a website with health services on the Chelsea Public School site. on the Chelsea Public School site. And we have a brochure that we hand out to our parents and try to educate them on what they need in order to keep their children safe and secure in schools. The district currently is in compliant with AEDs throughout the district. And through the past three years, we have trained over 150 members of the staff in how to use the AEDs that are all located within the schools. We have over 20 within all the buildings in the school. So obviously, we see children who are sick or injured on a daily basis. But we also do a lot of mandated screenings that are mandated by laws. We follow state, local, and federal government. So we do hearing, vision, height and weight, postural scoliosis, which is how you look at your back and to see if you have a curvature of your spine. We have added Esper in grade seven and nine, which was part of Governor Baker's opioid bill to recognize substance use abuse in schools. So we do that in a confidential manner. It's a screening, a brief intervention, referral to treatment. This short group of questions reflect what the adolescent physicians also ask in their offices when you go see them for your seventh or 10th grade physicals. We care for many students who are diabetic, have diagnosis of asthma. And in Chelsea, we have over 600 children that have a diagnosis of asthma, since we live in a very urban district, close to highways, close to the airport. We have cardiac, children with cardiac problems, neurological disease, pain management, daily catheters and tube feeds. We have a very close working relationship with MGH in Chelsea and Revere, East Boston Neighborhood Health Center, and their PD team, and caring for those who we both care for, and how to keep them safe in school. Dr. Lambert oversees our standing orders if we need to give medicine in schools. And we also work in conjunction with the Board of Health in Chelsea, with Lewis Prada. And Paula McHatten is the public health nurse. Our colleagues in the community play a role to reach our goals and looking at the whole child and the whole community. So some of these figures are what we saw last year. So when you look at the RN visits, so those are the numbers of children that actually come into the offices and that we see them for whatever reason. The health aides see a large number of visits, per se, or encounters. That is, they do a lot of documentation. They may do interpretation. When we get physicals, there's a lot of data entry. And the athletic trainer, which last year was her first year, first full year at the high school. She saw over 800 children at the high school for any sports-related injuries or orthopedic concerns. She can see. So she now is working in the health center office in conjunction with the two nurses at the high school. So when we talk about our screenings, we spend a lot of time doing screenings, the heightened weights. You can see the numbers of screenings that are done throughout the year. I just wanted to tell you, about three years ago, I came to you and asked you if we could change the head lice policy. We used to have a no-nit policy. You couldn't come to school if you had nits. And we changed it to a no-live lice policy. And the numbers drastically changed. So we were seeing over 3,000 visits. That would be so many visits that the nurses would have to see. And a lot of kids lost a lot of time from school because of that. So we changed that. In the first year, we went down to 712, and last year was 313. So we still see some children that have head lice, but the amount of, we don't do class checks and all that. So we kind of deal with that in a way that is more cost-efficient for the nursing team. So the total for all the visits, documentations, all the screenings, there was over 62,000 visits for the whole school year. In between the medication here, I just want to say, we write a lot of care plans for children that are medically compromised or need extra accommodations. So those are all online. They're shared with the other support teams, social workers, guidance. We have a lot of children have food allergies. So we worked with Aramac and we, our cafeteria staff, so we have medical alerts. Your child has a food allergy? It's on their ID. So when they swipe their card, they can see it on the computer. So if they're taking something from the line that they're not supposed to, you know, that's just a second check. For some of the younger kids who don't know what may be in food, hidden ingredients. We monitor absences. You know, we reach out to parents who have children that may stay home when they actually could be in school, especially for asthma. If you stay out for asthma, we really can treat children with asthma in school. So we'd rather have them in school, be able to take care of them, and only send them home if they really have to go home. We have the state, in our data that we supply to the state, they want it, return to learn, meaning like you're returning to the learning environment, how many kids come into the office. But we met this goal at 64, 94% of the time. So 95% of the time, our children go back to the classroom because there's a nurse in every school. And they can make that assessment on when it is safe to go back, when they need to go home. So medication management. We do give medicine in school. So there was close to 5,000 doses of medicine. That's throughout the whole district. We also, the care plans that I noticed, so we wrote over 255 care plans for last year. Occasionally, you have to call 911, whether it's a medical emergency, whether it's staff or for children. And EpiPen administration would be for someone that has an anaphylactic reaction to some kind of food. So we gave that three times last year. All those children have to be sent right to the hospital. And concussions, we had nine last year. So seven at the high school, one in the middle school, and one in the elementary school. We have a very strong team at the high school with the two nurses plus the athletic trainer, who have worked tremendously in coordinating all the laws regarding concussions. And the three of them are actively sitting on a sports concussion learning collaborative that meets monthly to enrich our early detection of concussions and caregiving in school. So we do a lot of return to learn, return to play. And we follow all those guidelines. So I just want to thank the superintendent for all her support, to Linda Bro and all the team at Central Office that have helped me in the last few years in this leadership role. Our team continues to work toward 2019 to work in a multidisciplinary approach to healthcare. And I will end by just sharing a quote from Florence Nightingale. "Let us never consider ourselves finished nurses. We must be learning all of our lives." Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Carlisle, you have a question?
I have a question. Do we educate the parents on getting the flu shot for the students?
Oh, I don't know if we educate them.
Tell them the importance of getting the flu shot.
I have to tell you, between the health centers in Chelsea and East Boston, probably over 90% of our children get the flu shot at the health centers. They have multiple flu shot afternoons that you can walk in. And I used to help out. I mean, I would do 200 in an afternoon. So they do that the whole month of October and November. So I don't see that we, we do make note of it when they have it. And they send us a copy of their immunizations. We make note of their flu shots.
Okay. All right. Well, I think it's important because of the flu coming into the schools and how it can be passed around to the rest of the students. I think it's important for the parents to know that. Thank you, Marie.
Mr. DePato?
This is Washington. Very thorough report. Thank you very much for that. Would you know how many nurses the Chelsea Public Schools hires that are in our system now? Would you know that number? Yes.
We have 10 nurses. One in every school. There's more than, there's more than one in every building.
But the amount is 10, right?
10.
Thank you.
I just have one question. That screening, brief intervention, referral, treatment, so is it every seventh and ninth grader? Or is it if you suspect? No. It's a screening. So it's not a suspect. It's a screening. So for the last two years, we've done seventh and ninth grade screenings. So when we do our posturals and our vision-hearing, we have another station that we set up for this seventh and ninth grade. Okay. Any other questions for this Washington? No? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Marie. I would like to call forward Executive Director of Administration and Finance, Monica Lamboy, and Director of Facilities and School Construction, Joe Cooney. The school committee last week, or this Policy and Procedures Subcommittee last week, asked for more information about Veterans Field, about the new field, about the warranty, and about some of the difficulties that we're running up against. I do want the students to know, first and foremost, that we are in favor of graduation. The school committee, as well as our Central Office staff, is in favor of moving graduation outside. We just want to do it in the most pragmatic and fiscally responsible way. So we do want it somewhere outside, but we need to dive into the background knowledge tonight of what we've actually put into place down at Veterans Field. And certainly, that will be the first choice. And I do know that I have a meeting tomorrow at 3 o'clock in my office with some of the members of Chelsea High School leadership class. I think the president and a few others are coming to discuss what's the first choice, second choice, third choice, if we had to go to other choices as well. So with that being said, we have done some more research, or actually Monica and Joe Cooney have done more research, and some comparisons with the surrounding schools and what are the things that are put into place.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Monica Lamboy, Director of Administration and Finance. We have a presentation this evening, which I would call a work in progress. We wanted to let you know that we are actively working on finding solutions to the outdoor graduation. Have heard very clearly from the students, have heard from the Policies and Procedures Committee. And we are providing you with the best information we have literally to a few minutes ago. But it is a work in progress, and we have some ideas, but certainly are not across the finish line yet. But we want to take the opportunity to learn about the field and to sort of honor and celebrate the accomplishments so far and let you know what's coming up as well on the field. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Joe.
Hello, everyone. I'm very impressed with the number of students that came out. I just hope we all did your homework before you got here. It's a late night.
Can you talk into the microphone, please?
I'm going to go through slide by slide. So turf replacement, 2.6, 2.2, $6 million. It's a big investment to the school, for the students. Sports are very important to education, health. So put a big investment to it. This is a rough idea of the track. I was going to come out in the field. We're also doing lighting in new restrooms in Phase 2. We're doing it through phases. It's so expensive, going through phases on this. And the total investment, when it's completed, will be $3.3 million. So it's a lot of money going into this field. This is the old field. You see it's beat up and rundown. And you'll notice in the old field, there's a lot of asphalt. And all that now is going to be covered with turf. When the soccer players are playing, when they're running hard and they ran off the turf onto the asphalt, it's like running onto ice. They're going down, they're getting hurt. So now the whole area is going to be turf. And there's more photos of it. You can see it's worn. No, there was graduations outside years ago. And there's so much asphalt and track here that all the students could be out here and not on the turf. They could all fit in this area here. And I'm not sure. I think it went because of weather. But I'm not sure why it actually went in. But we did have, this is the curbing for the new track, between the track and the turf. They're putting some curbing in. Curbing's coming around. New lighting, conduit, electrical conduit underground for all the new lights going in, LED lighting. This is the leveling the track. Laser leveled the field. So the field's leveled, and it's tested. It's percolator tested. They poured water on it to make sure the water drained through quickly enough so it wouldn't flood. Because underneath all the soils, there is drainage systems. And here it is, it's getting close. I don't know if you guys have seen it, walked by. You see the numbers going in today. It's looking pretty good. Those are the light poles right here. And this, these are the hash marks. These are cut out. I'll pass them around. This was cut out of the field. Now, you see the turf. And this is the next steps. So we hope to complete the turf installation. The yard markers are going on now. We're going to do an asphalt track, a temporary track, before the lights go in. So there's going to be, we're going to finish the field, do a temporary track. So when the tractors come in, the cranes, they can put the lights on and not damage the track. And then we're going to upgrade the sound system. So a new sound system's going in. In the spring of '19, the lighting should be completed. The permanent track should go in, and a new sound system will go in, which will finish off the project. So I'm going to pass out, this is a rough idea, but I'm going to pass out to you guys, since you're into it. So you have the turf itself, and there's a thin vinyl backing to it. Then there's a protective padding underneath. The padding is something that can't get crushed. It's got gas within it, and it holds it firm. And so if you fall down, you don't get hurt. And within, when this, a machine's going to go over and pick up the fibers, the filaments, you're going to fill it with some rubberized material so it feels more natural like grass and you don't get hurt when you fall. And you have the padding. So we'll go through the short-term constraints. So manufacturer's warranty. We have an eight-year warranty on the field itself. It's voided if there's vandalism, machinery, spike shoes, animals, fire, just your regular acts of God. And it talks about static and dynamic loads. Static and dynamic loads will void the warranty. We'll go through that. So any long-term load over 3 PSI voids the warranty of the $3.3 million track and field. So it went on to get an idea of this physics factbook goes through the PSI, what 3 PSI actually is. And it had a question between a 6,000-pound elephant walking and a 100-pound woman in high heels. What is more, what's the PSI is greater? So a 100-pound person walking in heels has a PSI of 280 pounds per square inch, where a 6,000-pound elephant has 75 pounds per square inch. Because an elephant always walks, this always has two feet on the ground. When a person walks, it's one heel hits and rotates, and it goes up. So what one high heel far exceeds the PSI, it's allowed for the warranty. So someone talked about just wearing wedges, that's probably what's going to have to be done. And that's not, and there's also dynamic loads. I'll go through that, too. So potential damage. So the static load is when you're standing up in your heels, or if you're sitting in a chair with four legs. That's the static load that's put on the field. If there are casters on the council's chairs If there are casters on the council's chairs, and the school committee chairs, and they roll backwards, that's the dynamic load. Now, it's the load that's moving, it's dynamic load. So, dynamic load causes turf disengagement, stretching. So, if a lot of people walk on the field at the same time, a new turf field, when they break in after a year, it's not as much, but if they walk, it can stretch that thin vinyl underneath, and once it's stretched, it's over. When the field's put in, every 10 yards, it's rolled out, and it's flipped over to two pieces, and they're stitched together, and it's flipped back, so it's all stitched. That's the weakest part of the field. So, if there's a dynamic load that's moving, and it stretches that out, it's gone, and we lose the warranty. Infill shifting and displacement. So, the fill that goes through, when they pick up the fibers and they put the sand in there, that's nice and level. If there's a lot of people, that moves that fill, the field gets wavy, and it's unsafe to run and play on, so you can't do that either. Fill contamination is another issue. Gum will ruin the field. Some gum, spilled coffee, any of those things causes huge problems, causes bacteria to grow. It's not a natural field. It's not natural grass. Whatever happens to it stays happened to it. It can't fix itself. And the same with the filaments, can get damaged, and the drainage system, like a heavy stage, you have to protect the field. If they have a heavy dynamic load, heavy static load of the stage, and that drainage system gets damaged, you're in big trouble because you can't really find it, and it's down three, four feet. It's down there, so you can't have, if you put a stage on it, you have to put plywood, three-quarter-inch plywood under the whole stage to protect it. And the first year, regular four-legged chair, all chairs have to be protected the first year. After the first year, and the field settles in, oops, after the first year, once the field settles in, you can put chairs on the field. You can't do high heels, you can never do those. It's called a sled chair. Instead of doing four points, it's, the pipes come down, and you sit, and they come around, so it's like, it's all the way around. That type of chair is what's allowed to be on the field after the first year. Okay? So, no unprotected turf for seating in the first year. You have to be, you have to protect it if it's going to be seating, and no large crowds moving in the same direction, because that's going to stretch and damage the turf. So, if we talk about dynamic loads, but then another issue, what they talked about with heels on the turf is if it's, you'll roll your ankles, if you get high heels on it, because it's so soft, cushioning, and you have the infill, you'll roll ankles also, besides damaging the field, you're damaging yourself. So, large, we talked about the large static loads, the four-legged chairs, and heavy, you can't do that. So, these are the options. You do four-by-eight plywood sheets, three-quarter-inch thick. So, it's very expensive to put that plywood down, but that's probably the cheapest way to go. There's other, I asked for interlocking services. There's a whole field out there of companies that supply, like Gillette Stadium, when they have concerts, they don't do plywood. They have interlocking parts that go in and cover the whole field and protect it. I asked for quotes, and they didn't get back to me yet, but plywood is $2.28 a foot, and that's a large area. So, it's about $20,000 to cover part of the field. And this is the interlocking members, but I didn't get a quote on that yet. And I'd like to turn it over to Monica.
Thank you. So, we approached four different school districts to find out about their outdoor graduation. Two have responded, so we have preliminary information from them. We'll certainly add as we get additional information. I think one really important point in what Joe was saying is that year one is different than any other year on the field. There are certain things that are still moving and certain things that are still settling. So, the first year, which happens to be this year, is a different situation, and the school districts that we are in communication with, their fields are not as new as ours is. But we'll still share what we learned. From Revere, what we learned is only their students are allowed on the field. There are no parents, there's nobody other than staff and the students on the field. And the reason for that, I believe, is because they have a prohibition on high-heeled shoes. So, the students are allowed to wear wedge shoes, the people on the field are allowed to wear wedges, which we can certainly communicate with our students if we were in that situation, but parents, grandparents, and such, we are not able to modify their shoe wear for the event. We also learned along the way that the students pay for their caps and gowns, which we pay for. We thought that was an interesting piece of information, and they don't provide any refreshments. So, when we were looking at sort of costs for different districts, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, should anybody look at what they're spending. From Everett, we learned that they did have protection in their first year of their field. Subsequently, they have not done that. They used the plywood solution, which Joe had mentioned. What they've done over a period of time has been to buy those sled or U-shaped chairs over a number of years, so that they have a group of them. Those types of chairs are not readily rentable in the community. If you think about events that you go to, it's typically the four-legged chairs is what most of the rental companies have. So, they've gone through the process of buying them over time. And they spent over $1,200 on portable toilets. I just picked out an interesting piece of information to me. I'm a little bit nerdy on the money part. So, our preliminary thoughts, and I really want to emphasize this is preliminary. It needs a lot of communication, a lot of conversation, a lot of brainstorming still, but we wanted to offer at least an early thought of what we could do if we thought year one was a little bit different than the future years. So, an idea we came up with was to, and it had been discussed before, is to use Carter Park for the year coming up. The same sort of specifications I'm going to give you for that would also apply to the Burke Complex, because those fields are very similar. But the basic idea we had here was to have an elevated stage, it would be higher than the stage that has been typically used in the high school, so it has the kind of visibility from outside, from, in order to have as many seats as we would need to be able to see it. It would be a 36-inch-high stage instead of a 24-inch-high, which means we'd have a lot longer ramp for the ADA, but there's ample room to do that if we did it outside at the field. We would be renting a minimum of 2,850 chairs. We'd probably add another 10% on that, because not every chair, not everybody's going to just sit right in, next to each other. So, we're over 3,000 chairs that we would rent for the event. Porta-potties, we are quoting out the nice-looking ones that are more like bathrooms that are on wheels that you can get. Pricing that out, we would need a sound system that would be more significant than you would have inside, because when you're outside, as you know, the noise starts to spread out. So, we would really have to work with the noise, the sound companies to make sure that we had amplification even for the folks in the back, because we know how important it is for them to feel part of the event. We would do some improvements to the walkways to make sure that there was ADA compliance, and we're talking about whether we would need to do something in between the main aisles of the chairs to make sure that we were compliant and that people could move around. We haven't yet settled on that, but these are the basic components that you would need for outside. And then, we would say in the future to go back to look at Veterans Field, whether some of those permanent interlocking pieces would be affordable, we don't know. We would not need as much certainly if we were doing it in year two or in future years, but really to ask that question for Veterans Field after we let the first year kind of settle it. And over time, if we did have to buy some sort of permanent layering, that we would want to set up a fee structure so that we could recoup some of that money from different events that might take place on that field. And with that, we're happy to answer questions.
Mr. DePato?
I noticed that we're going to pay 2.26 million.
Mr. DePato, can you speak into the microphone?
Okay. I noticed that we're going to spend 2.26 million for this field turf. And in the past, last 20 years, we had concrete or cement aprons around each end zone and around each sideline on both sides. They were cement aprons. So, my question is, we're spending a lot of money on turf that is never going to be utilized. The football field, it's always is required to have, is 160, 170 yards by 75 yards. The soccer field is even smaller. This sample shows that we have the whole field in field turf. What was the idea behind that?
It was for safety of the players. So, when the soccer players were running, they're leaving the turf and hitting the asphalt, and they're going right down. They're getting hurt. They're slopping down, and so there's no drainage. There's not a drain, it's still the asphalt, but has that padding over it. It's not made to play on. It has the padding over it, and has the turf, but doesn't have all the drainage and all the infrastructure underneath it. The asphalt is underneath that, but it's just so the players will not get hurt running off the field onto the asphalt.
I don't ever remember a football player or soccer player getting hurt running out of bounds.
That's what I was told.
It's, 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 it's from the sidelines to the cement aprons, it's like 25 yards.
Yes.
In 25 yards, a student athlete is able to pull himself up to not hurt himself.
They're running, they're running hard. Sort of, they're running hard for the ball, and just hit that asphalt, running after the ball, hit the asphalt, and go down and get hurt.
Okay, so, so was it the engineer's idea to field turf, the whole field?
After speaking with the coaches, yes.
Mr. Maransky?
We're paying well over $3 million to renovate this field. The biggest problem outside of replacing the turf is our stands, that we have 30 to 40 yards away from the field. And it's beyond belief how we did not correct this the second time around. The first time around, we made a mistake, all right? These parents and these kids, who are going to be here long after we leave, all right, are going to have a field, a stance that, even Dr. Brooks said this the other day in a meeting, the stands are too far away from the graduation in the field, all right? I just can't believe that the school committee, when this was being done, was not involved, or the city council was not involved, all right? Because I don't know who did this, who made the final approval, even if they live in the city, or if they've ever been down to the stadium and watched a game. But this is absolutely unacceptable, you know? I just feel like there are kids, Papuaanna, Pride, Chelsea Pride, soccer programs, lacrosse programs, and the biggest complaint that I've heard over the years leaving that field is, you can't seat it. And we made the same mistake again. I don't, Joe, I don't mean to take it on you. I know you just came along. It's just the administration and the city of Chelsea should have done a much better job on correcting this issue, all right? Other than that, I have another thing. I did speak to the president of the company who have installed this turf. The name of the company is Elite Turf Installation. I actually hopped a fence Friday to go talk to him. He told me you can't use the field right now, but in June, that field should be ready for anything. That turf is made to take on anything. I asked, high heels? He said yes. I said, put a station out there? He said yes. So, these fields are made for that stuff. He said, the only thing that would ruin that field would be bubble gum.
So, I went out there, and I spoke with them also, and the same guy goes, I just talked to somebody about it, and you can put anything on it. And then the reps said, no, you can't put anything on it. The installers said you could, and the engineer said you can't put, and he gave me all the information about disengagement, that's why I brought it up. So, the installer told me the same thing he told you, and it was overruled by the engineer there. And I'll go back to your point about the stands being far away, and that school was designed, that track was designed 20 years ago. I was a building inspector, and I ran track through high school and college, and I didn't like the track. I said, why does, the track is almost round. I didn't like it at all. It's very short straightaways and long turns. And the idea back then was to go on the soccer fields, go sideways, so you have two games at once, and that's how it was designed. So, now all the drainage, so we tested the drainage now, because I wanted to redesign it now myself. We tested the drainage, and it all worked. If the drainage didn't work, we probably could have done something different, but it's so much money to fix the drainage. When it worked, you had to stay with it. It's 3.3 million with the drainage. If we had to put new drainage in, I don't know whether the money would have been for the track. It was huge, huge.
Well, I just, I just felt like...
It's the original design is what works.
I just felt like, you know, you look, you go to all the other cities, and you look at their fields, and you look where their stands are, and their track, and why can't we have it, you know? Even if you have to spend more, if we have to spend more money to do it, it's worth it, because, like I said, most of us aren't going to be here in 10 years. But these kids are going to have kids. Maybe their kids are going to play on the field, and they're going to go down there, and they're going to sit eye level, and you know what you can see? You can see the back of the football players that are standing on the sideline. That's what you see when you go down there, you know? So, I mean, I just, I was hoping that they corrected that, and obviously, they didn't, you know?
Another issue that makes it tough to correct that is the track itself, the 40-meter track, it goes full length. To correct it, you have to go into the ball field. You have to take the track and go this way with it. And that was, this part was kind of tough. So, we had to do all that and new drainage.
I just, like I said, I just...
The room, everything's tight in Chelsea. That's the thing. It's a room issue.
I just felt like the kids and their parents got cheated, you know? And this is well before, this goes back years ago when they first did the field, you know? The stands are just, you know, I made a recommendation where you put the stands on one side, you get rid of the stands on the Carter Field side, you have the press block on one side, you make the stands higher up and closer, closer to the track, you know? And then, you move all that space that we had on one side, you can move it to the other side, because you've got 30 yards on each side, you know? But I guess it's too late now.
You know, the stands are close to the track. They're just far from the field.
Right.
The field's designed sideways, correct.
Like I said, if you go to other, any other stadium around here, you'll see the difference, especially if you're viewing the game. So, that's it. And thank you for your presentation tonight.
Thank you.
You had a question?
Hi. Hold on. I'm too short. I'm too short. I just want to start off by thanking Monica and Joe for all of the work, and the team for putting this lovely presentation together and answering all of the questions that we have. I also want to thank all of the students here. I'm a teacher myself, and it just is truly admirable to see all of the youth here and truly advocating and fighting for what you want. We are trying our best to really play out every option there are. But I have a couple of questions. So, the money is already spent, right, on like all the materials and the setup and the programming and the field, correct?
The money's encumbered, yes.
Okay. And the design of the field is already finalized, and we're in the middle of the construction, correct?
Yes.
So, all we can do is move forward and plan for a graduation, whether it's in Veterans Field or...
Carter Park.
Carter Park, correct? And so, the ultimate decision now is whether we are, whether we are doing it at Carter Park or Veterans Field?
Well, I have a meeting tomorrow with the students. I'd like to actually hear their preferences, because we're also considering two other places, or we've asked the students to consider two other places as of last Thursday night. Mary Seabrook Complex, because there's a lot of parking.
You know, on the baseball field, and then also Admiral's Hill. We believe that, and I actually don't remember it. I think I was teaching at the elementary at the time, but there was a couple of graduations held at Admiral's Hill in the early 90s. So, I, there's no vote tonight on the location. There is a vote to vote to have it outside. So, location is to be determined, and I'd like to hear from the students tomorrow and bring that information back in terms of their first, second, third choices.
Thank you.
Any other question? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cooney. Mr. Maransky?
Can I make a motion? We go out of order and vote on this now. So, you got a lot of kids that are here. This way, they can go home.
Do we have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So, we're going to go out of order to... Okay, it's the last item on the agenda, okay? So, consideration and action to hold Chelsea High School graduation outside with the final location to be determined. The school committee, Policy and Procedures Subcommittee, met on October 25th, 2018, to discuss the logistics and cost of moving graduation outdoors. After reviewing the information that was presented, the Policy and Procedures Subcommittee agreed to submit the motion to the full committee. Terry, do a roll call?
On the motion to hold Chelsea High School graduation outside with the final location to be determined, Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Maransky?
Yes.
Mr. DePato?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
It's nine in the affirmative. The motion carries.
Nine in the affirmative. Motion passes.
Good job, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Ladies and gentlemen, I just want to speak real quickly. Motion, you know, you guys have worked really hard for this, and, you know, I wish my graduation would have been outside, but, you know, our graduation, Osmond. But, you know, I just want to commend the work of every single student who's came to the meetings, who's worked with school committee member Maransky, with all the school committee, with the superintendent, her central office, and even with workers outside of the city. Ms. Asher, Manuel Tej, Jocelyn Pont, you know, all of you guys worked hard, but these people were the ones who were the leaders and made sure that everyone here came and advocated hardly for it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Maransky?
For you, for the people that weren't here at the Policy and Procedure meeting last week, I told Manuel and the other students here that the way you guys handled this was unbelievable, you know? Our politicians, state and nationwide, should do what you guys did, you know? So, I just want to commend you, and you got your graduation outside. Congratulations.
Dr. Burke?
Just, just a reminder, the students who were at Policies and Procedures last week, along with Manuel, three o'clock in my office tomorrow to talk about location. 3 o'clock in my office tomorrow to talk about location.
They have a parent that would like to say something, yes?
I would say thank you guys, and I hope these students don't forget what you're doing for them, and they can work together, like, to work together.
Thank you. And I'm just going to say, I'll be praying since now for great weather. And the class of 2019 could take pride that they have started a new tradition at Chelsea High, and we could continue this for many more years. So, thank you.
At this time, Madam Chairwoman, I would like to move back to order, please.
Do we have a second motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, now we're back to business. Okay, so we were done with presentations, but Dr. Burke reported the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I would like to call forward Assistant Superintendent Sarah Kent for this, um, report on student achievement.
Good evening. Um, I have a quick report for you tonight on the indicators of success, um, that you have a copy in front of you. As most of you know, especially the students, the quarter ends tomorrow, uh, so we do not have grades yet. We'll have them next month. And so the only things I have to report to you on tonight are the monthly indicators around attendance, dropout, and mobility. So if we could start on page three. I'm trying, I won't take all that personally. The grades 1 through 8 actually hit the target of attendance over 95% in the month of October. And the kindergarten and pre-k came, came very close. Overall, uh, we currently stand 0.9% below our target, but we improved significantly in the month of October over the month of September. If we could move to page six. Our indicator eight of the dropout rate. Our goal is to have our dropout rate decrease by 2%. Currently, we have had to date 13 students drop out, which is, as you can see, a 0.92%. We're under 1%. The 13 students, as you can see in the chart at the bottom of the page, one was a regular education student, two were students with disabilities, eight were ELL students, and a new category that we've added this year is an ELL student who also has students with, that, disabilities. Two students with both of those categories dropped out. If you turn to page seven, you can see some details about those students. You can see that there were four students this month in grade 11, um, which was our highest grade. And most of the students that left, we are to locations unknown. If you could turn to page nine, just our mobility. Our mobility stabilized slightly compared to last month. That was pretty crazy. Um, we had 114 students this month either move in or out of the district. Overall, we ended up with four less students, um, but 114 either came or went, which leaves our total, um, at 640 students already this year that have either come or gone. And there, we have gained 86 more than we have lost as a district. And that's all I have for this evening on the indicators of success. Next month, we will have grades. Any questions?
Any questions? Ms. Garcia?
Quick, I just have a quick question for students, um, with disabilities who are dropping out. I wonder, um, is there any outreach done on behalf of the school to the families providing resources such as programs like Triangle? Uh, which, um, was, that program was, yeah, Triangle's a great program. But I'm just wondering if we are, uh, providing some sort of help for families, for students with disabilities who decided to drop out of school?
Um, yes. Um, not only do we do interviews and, and counsel them not to drop out of school, you know, but if they're, if, if they're so determined to do so, then what we do is we set them up with, um, certain services depending upon their need and their IEPs, um, and referrals. So, um, referrals to certain places. You know, they don't always act on those referrals and that information. But nonetheless, we do, we do make sure that we give them that information.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kent.
Um, Madam Chair, I would like to commend to the record the personnel update, which is enclosure B. New hires are 15 for the month of, um, October. Um, we have 10 resignations, retirements, and terminations, and we have seven promotions and transfers. I would also like to come into the record enclosure C, which is our enrollment report. We have 6,106 students in district, 183 out-of-district students, for a total enrollment of 6,289. And you will see that that is down from the 6,500 of, um, the end of, um, last year. At the same time, our mobility rate continues, so we do anticipate we will be getting more students into the, into the school district. It's always a fluctuating number for us, but we are monitoring it. Announcements, um, I, you have before you the Chelsea Annual Report. Usually, we give this to you November 1st of every year, or, um, the, actually, the first November meeting, um, of the school committee. I did send you an email explaining the fact that, uh, the municipal side, uh, the Chelsea, the city of Chelsea, was late closing their books this year, so that meant we were late, the school department was late closing our books. It is, this is the only page that is incomplete, other than our signatures on the first page, Madam Chair. What we will do is we will finish this off, and we will give you, um, the complete draft at the December meeting. Also this year, new, rather than sending you an email with a bunch of attachments, um, that had all, that have all of our accelerated improvement plans and our turnaround plans, we decided to put it into a nice booklet for you, so that you can actually go through and see each one of our, our, our plans. We have, um, five accelerated improvement plans and four turnaround plans. Next year, we will have actually six accelerated improvement plans, because, um, Chelsea Opportunity Academy will be required to submit theirs at that point. The first year of implementation and opening of the Chelsea Opportunity Academy, they are not required to do so. And then you also have, um, from Aramak, who, which is our food service group, the, um, this is the September report. I am going to invite, um, Amanda Muniz, the head of our food service in the district, to come to, um, a, a school committee meeting within the next, uh, four to, um, eight weeks, and to do a fuller presentation on, um, you know, the, the various initiatives that we are doing to increase participation in our breakfast program, as well as, um, the wonderful work that they are doing in our lunch program. If you, if you go through the, the, um, the color photos, you will see some of the things that they are doing. As well as the, this, um, the pictures will show that the healthy foods that are being made from scratch. They have the zero trans fats, so we're in compliance with our city ordinance, um, and they are doing an excellent job. They are increasing the participation, um, not at a rate that is, um, you know, dramatic, but it is small incremental changes. And so we're going to continue with the various methods that we're using, um, to serve breakfast, and also to, um, the food, the, the various, um, uh, foods. Moving on, just announcing a few dates. November 12th is the Veterans Day holiday. There's no school, as well as the, the offices here will be closed. Um, November 13th is an early release day, and, uh, November 15th to the 17th is the Chelsea High School Fall Play. November 21st, there is no school. That's the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. And remember, you have the Wednesday, the Thursday, and the Friday. Um, the 11:20 certainly, the Thursday, um, is, uh, Thanksgiving Day holiday, and then of course, um, Friday. And then the next meeting of our school committee is, um, the full school committee, is the regular meeting would be, uh, December 6th. However, I also want to, there'll be more information coming forward on a subcommittee of the whole that is going to be scheduled. A few of the school committee members have asked for information. One of them is, um, uh, information regarding hiring responsibilities per, uh, a Mass Association of School Business Offices manual. And, um, the second one is a request for the list of retirees working in the Chelsea Public Schools. And so in consultation with school committee chair, um, she feels it's best that the information be shared with all school committee members. So she has asked me to schedule a school committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, November 27th at 6:00 PM. At that time, there will be an invited guest, and the invited guest who will be presenting to us will be Rebecca Bryant, who is our lawyer from Stolman and Chandler, and she can speak to some of these things. So more information, there'll, there may be some other things on the agenda. I'm hoping if we can come to, um, you know, a, a, a place where we, we can, um, maybe that's also the meeting. We discuss the location and we do a vote on the location, um, for the graduation. So that's pending and coming up. Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Burke. Moving along to committee reports. Budget and Finance, enclosure D. Ms. Enriquez?
Budget and Finance Subcommittee met at 6:35 PM on Thursday, October 4th. In attendance were Anna Hernandez, Josenia Alfaro, Rosmarie Carr Slaya, Lucia Enriquez, and Chairwoman Ginette Velez. Also present were Monica Lenboy, Executive Director of Budget and Finance, and Superintendent, uh, Dr. Mary Burke. The meeting was called to order at 6:35, and the action item was discussed about the federal impact aid for displaced student grant for SY 2017 and 2018. The grant award was of 136,700, play that, 744. The grant funds will be used to cover the special education costs already incurred by the district in SY 2018, including the cost of staff and con, uh, services and support of students displaced from the Uraque and Maria. The meeting adjourned at 6:42.
Thank you, Ms. Enriquez. Do we have a motion to accept the Budget and Finance Subcommittee minutes? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving along. Okay. Ms. Hernandez? Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Can I make a motion to accept all the committee meetings, minutes?
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, yeah, okay. Motion passes. So we'll commend all subcommittee minutes to the record. If there's no unfinished business, we'll move on to new business. There's consideration and action to approve the updated bullying plan enclosure H. Do we do a roll call? Do we just? I'm sorry, I was going to miss the most important people in this room. Sorry, it's been a long night. But we do have our student reps, and we really want to hear your reports.
So, um, first of all, um, as student representative and on behalf of Chelsea High School, I want to say thank you for supporting us on outside graduation. Um, moving to, um, news about what happened in Chelsea High School, um, within the past few days. Ped Raleigh, um, all classes participated in it, and it was fun seeing the new dance-off which they implemented this year. The Halloween dance, um, was a success with over 150 people, um, going to it. There was, um, really fun music to dance to. It was really fun. I was there. For clubs, um, mock trial has recently started, and, um, a lot of students are taking part in it this year, and they all seem very enthusiastic about taking roles of lawyers and witnesses. Furthermore, we're also having the help from some Harvard Law students to have a deeper and better understanding of the case, which we got this year, and to understand also the law behind it. Bridge tutoring program, in which bilingual students in regular classes assist newcomers, is starting next week with over 60 students involved.
I would also like to thank all of you guys for allowing us to have our graduation outside. So the drama club, like Dr. Burke said, this year, it's going to be happening on the 15th, 16th, and 17th. It's all going to happen at 7:00 PM. A ticket for a student is $7, and for an adult, it is $10. The play is The Importance of Being Earnest. Um, the band in Qantari this year will be performing on the 8th at the Soldiers' Home for the yearly Veterans Day performance that they do. A, a new student government is starting called Student Advisory Council, so students have been nominated by culture or club advisor. We'll be continuing to talk about, um, the school issues at hand. With, uh, this, um, SAC, both Manuel and I are part of it, and hopefully with it, we can update the school committee in our monthly meetings about the clubs and things happening at Chelsea High. The boys soccer team's undefeated and will have their first state game at Highland tomorrow against Acton Box Bar at 5. Cross country will have their first state meet as well next Saturday. Football has a game tomorrow against Cathedral at Charlestown. The Thanksgiving game has been moved this year and will be held on the 21st at the Daily Field in Brighton. They'll be going against Brighton High School. And the yearly Turkey Trial will be held on the 17th at Admiral's Hill. There's no fee for students and a $25 fee for adults, and all are welcomed.
Thank you. Any questions for our student reps? Thank you. Okay, now I can move on. Consideration and action to approve the updating bullying plan. Do we do a roll call? Or just make a motion? So, do we have a motion to accept? Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Consideration and action to accept $5,932.50 from the New England Aquarium as part of the Community Partnership for Resilience Project. CPR is a project to empower youth and spark their involvement in local climate resilience work. The grant will fund a 21-week after-school program for grades 5 through 8 at the three middle schools where students will explore scientific data provided by NOAA to better understand climate change-related issues that affect Chelsea. For example, sea level rise, precipitation, flooding, and/or extreme heat. New England Aquarium and the Metropolitan Area Planning Council will guide the project work. Funding from NOAA has been provided to the New England Aquarium, which is issuing a sub-grant in the amount of nine, $5,132.50 to the Chelsea Public Schools. The grant funds will be used for salaries, materials, and transportation costs. For example, buses for field trips. Under Mass General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 37A, provides the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call?
A motion to accept $5,932.50 for the Community Partnership for Resilience Project. Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Maransky?
Yes.
Mr. DePato?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative. The motion passes.
Nine in the affirmative. Motion passes. Consideration and action to accept $13,200 from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the Early Grades Literacy Grant. This state grant supports selected schools with funding for a team of teachers and at least one administrator to participate in a year-long professional learning series that supports the implementation of the 2017 curriculum frameworks through ongoing professional development to increase the capacity of school-based teams to cultivate high-quality literacy skills within and across curricular domains with the statewide goal of improving student performance and literacy in kindergarten through grade three. Note that although awards letters from the governor's office are dated October 4, 2018, the district did not receive them until October 11, 2018. Furthermore, specific award and program details from DESI were received on October 18. The grant funds will be used for stipend substitutes and to purchase early literacy materials and other expenses in support of the program. Under Mass General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 37A, provides for acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call?
On the motion to accept $13,200 from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the Early Grades Literacy Grant. Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez? Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Maransky?
Yes.
Mr. DePato?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative, the motion carries.
Nine in the affirmative, motion passes. Now, we're gonna move on to communications. So, I want to commend to the record a thank you letter from teacher Matthew LeBranch, enclosure I. Okay. So, it was from, hmm, hmm, hmm. Did they go on an entrepreneurship challenge?
Yes. They went to New York City.
They went to New York City. So, it's from a teacher that was able to take students to New York City. And we also have... We also have communication, um, from Cheryl Watson. It's from the Ethics Commission. Issues reminder on use of public resources for political activity. And we also have received an email with this information. So... And I think that's it. Any final comments or announcements? Ms. Alfaro?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'd just like to apologize for a fair amount of time that I will not be able to participate on the December 6th meeting as it is the annual meeting for, uh, the collaborative, the place that I work for.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. DePato?
Moment of silence for Arnold Garver, former Chelsea High School athlete, who went on to become the trainer for the Milwaukee Bucks in the National Basketball League. He was there as their trainer for many, many years. And, uh, a lot of Chelsea kids that played sports through the years looked up to him. He was an idol and he's surely gonna be missed.
Okay. Let's all rise for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Ms. Carlisle?
I just wanted to publicly thank the, um, the teachers and the administrators down at the Early Learning Center. This past week, we had an incident. And I want to thank them for the lockdown and to make sure all those students were safe this week. It's sad when we live in a world today that we have to do these lockdowns to protect our children. But we are lucky here in Chelsea and all over the United States that we have wonderful administrators and teachers that know how to take care of the students when they're in school. So, I want to publicly thank the administrators and the teachers at the Early Learning Center for what they did this week.
Mr. Maransky?
I just want to, um, give the athletic programs, uh, good luck this week. Especially the, uh, soccer program, who's stepped up their class this year. They've been Division One. So, they got a big hill to climb. But, uh, they can beat Acton Boxborough. And, uh, the track team, I wish them the best of luck too, along with the football team. I also want to say, we're not gonna meet until after Thanksgiving. So, ha, uh, everybody have a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say to the students, I hope this is not the last time we see you 'cause you got what you wanted. We like to have an audience. So, please, come back. Even if you're not here to speak on something. But it's great to see you guys here and just listening to how the process works. And I will reiterate my peers, happy Thanksgiving to all the families out there. Be safe and we still have school. There's, it's just a little break in between. But we still have a lot of work to do, especially those seniors. Fast, uh, SATs, college apps, tons of work. So, good luck and everybody have a safe night. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.